Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the first informational meeting for town meeting. Please be patient with us because this is not like what we're used to, of course. There is no debate at this meeting. You can give your opinions, but there will be no debate on the topics. Everything that's in the warning is going to go in the, on the ballot, has written. There's no changes to be made. There's nothing like that this evening. We ask that you, if you would like to speak on the topic, that you make sure you'd signed up. We're going to give each speaker two minutes. And please announce your name and where you're from. And when you're ready to speak, we have people in the back, Shelley and her assistant, that will bring you the microphone and just give your name and where you're from, please. We'll get started. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, and with all your liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have the rules of order. Public discussion shall be subject to reasonable rules set by the select board. The chair shall announce the written rules at the beginning of the meeting, and copies should be made available for everyone. Those planning to speak must put their name, town residents, and the signing sheet indicate their wish to speak. All speakers shall be limited to two minutes per ballot item. This shall be timed and strictly enforced by the chair. Interim town administrator will keep the timer, be time keeper. Order speakers, whether town residents in person, then town residents that are on Zoom, non-residents in person, and then non-residents on Zoom. The chair set a time limit for each ballot item is reflected below. First, though, before we get into that, we'll do Richard Flint with the town report dedication, please.
Good evening. I want to dedicate the town, the town report. I dedicate it. I'm going to say a few words, try to make it brief. And I just dedicated to, we're dedicating it to a person that I've known since we went to school in this building back in the 70s. Grew up, went in and out of the store. And we've had a lot of debates between him and I. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're bad. But he's always there for the community. He served as fireman. He helps any way he can. And it's been a pleasure to see what he's done in this town for everybody. The whole community. And if there's something that goes wrong, if there's a fire and there's help to be needed, David De Zorcy's there. If somebody needs groceries, David De Zorcy's there, you know. And David De Zorcy is there for any kind of help. He helps everybody that he can, including the town. And this town takes a lot of honor to have him in it. And hope he is around in this town for many more years to come. And David, Kelly, and Chris, can you come up here and receive this award?
It's a two-way street, okay? I helped you guys out, but without your support, I wouldn't be able to be here. So thank you all for everything.
Thank you, Richard. So what we're going to do, folks, we're going to do this in blocks of, actually, can I interrupt a second? Oh, you're the boss. A little dedication here to make. This is Kyle's last meeting tonight. And I got a little plaque from here. I'm just going to read off the plaque. It's Kyle Lothe in Highgate Select Board, March 2020 to March 2025. Thank you for years of dedication to the town of Highgate. Your integrity, honesty, and relentless commitment to better the lives of people in our community is a definition of a selfless public service. With the respect and admiration of everyone in Highgate, we wish you and your future endeavors, wish you well in your future endeavors. It's been a pleasure. Thank you. Okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to break this up in blocks. We're going to do four articles in a block. Articles one through four is going to go through seven o'clock. Pretty much on schedule now. Articles five through eight will go through 7:45, and then articles nine through 12 through 8:30. And we'll get started. As we discussed, we only have to go through the articles correctly. I don't have to read everything, guys. Article one, to elect the following town officers: one cemetery commissioner for a term of five years, one library trustee for a term of five years, one moderator for ensuing year, one select board member for a term of one year, remaining on a three-year term, one select board member for a term of two years, one select board for a term of two years, one select board member for a term of three years, and one treasurer for a term of three years. Do you have any questions? Article two, shall the voters of the town of Highgate set the final date of payment for FY 2025, 2026 property taxes to be Thursday, October 30th, 2025, with payments to be received in the town office by 4:00 p.m.? No questions. Article three, shall the voters of the town of Highgate advise the select board to allow the legal use of ATVs, all-terrain vehicles, on all town roads? ATVs must be registered, insured, have a valid VASA, Vermont All-Terrain Vehicle Sportsman Association registration sticker fixed, as well as wear approved helmets and seatbelts. Do we have any comments?
Shelley?
Hi.
Can you hold just a second time? We're going to ask Ray to say a couple of words about the ATV article. Sorry.
Tom, will you bring your mic?
Thank you. So there's a large group of people in Franklin County that are trying. And Highgate is the only one that didn't have actual access to get the trails and meet up with other towns. So we decided to petition this article right now. Last year, the select board did open up a couple of roads, which helps people from Swan get on the way up to Franklin. But it doesn't do anything for the rest of the town. So we're about to get the other road to open up. But we want to keep them all equal. Everybody has to be registered and chosen. But that's the reason for that.
Ty?
Yeah, Ty Swinier. So if this article passes, the select board will, will the select board still have to write the ATV ordinance on top of this article page?
No.
Yes, Ty.
Yeah, we'll turn it on.
Yeah. So we revised it last year when we opened a couple of roads up. We had to put in exactly where the VASA people could go. So that was September of last year. If we did approve this again this year, we'd have to rewrite it again and revise it. But we already do have an ordinance someplace.
Rebecca Mannan, I have two questions. One, is this binding? And two, what feedback have you received since you've opened some roads, either from people that live on those roads or from the police presence?
Either one.
Yes. Yes, it is a binding mode. And as far as the roads that we've opened, it's been good so far. There hasn't been much, anything wrong so far. So I guess it's okay to keep moving forward.
Henry Ringo. So one question that I have is, what's the police going to be able to do with the people that are abusing this situation? In the past, it's always been kind of a, the police can't cut them. So is this changing any of that? I guess my only big complaint is, if everybody had a stock muffler on these machines, I don't think there'd be any problems. So I guess I would like to have that as part of the situation though. If we're going to allow this, have some sense of stock muffler being necessary.
So according to state statute, to be legal, they have to have a stock muffler. So according to state statute, to be legal, they have to have a stock muffler. It's not always the case of, is that. I have a couple of issues with this article. I don't know if anybody's willing to approach the table here. I'd like to present some evidence. How about Mr. Ringo? Would you mind helping me out here real quick? Yeah, come out to the
So I wanted to go through these pictures and tell me what you think's an inappropriate vehicle to be on the road with.
That's a good question. So this is an ATV.
Correct.
I would not consider that an ATV.
Okay.
I see plenty of those on the road or something similar to that. This is supposedly outlawed, meaning a three-wheeler. And that's, I'm going to say, an amphibious type machine, a six-wheeler. And I see a lot of those on the road, which I have considered either razors or side-by-sides of some sort.
Sure.
So that's a good question.
Yeah. So the reason I ask this is the state of Vermont has a very loose definition of ATVs.
Yeah.
All of these vehicles pictured here are considered ATVs, according to state laws.
Yeah.
Some of these are obviously very inappropriate for road use. Would you agree? We need to speak up, please.
Yeah, I can't hear you at all.
I would agree in the sense that they're probably very apt to roll over easily compared to a car, a pickup truck, or a motorcycle.
Okay. So I agree. Some of these are inappropriate for roads.
So we can't hear you when you're speaking?
When you're speaking, Henry, you need to...
So my response was, some of these pictures that he showed me, I would say would be very apt to roll over compared to a motorcycle, a car, or a pickup. The biggest issue with a lot of these is speed. If people are doing the speed limit and stuff like that, I'm going to say fine. But it's those few that abuse it is what I'm worried about. I'm not saying I'm against this article. I'm just saying, some of these, I agree with him, that some of these pictures that he showed me probably shouldn't be on our roads. But who's going to decide that?
They can't be on a long time. It's going to be a feedback.
Yeah, but if he goes over there.
Okay, that's fine, but he was not here.
Thank you, Henry. So number one, the definition of the ATV, I think, is too broad to open up all of our roadways. I think there's other solutions to accommodate the people that really want to drive on the roadways, specifically, I think, mostly the side-by-side community. And I think we should pursue those avenues instead of passing an all-inclusive ATV ordinance. I've done some brief research that found an article that has average number of reported ATV deaths for a three-year period. And that total number was 804. Of those, 52% were on the roadways. And 33% of those were on paved roadways. So that's my opinion on this article. I think we should find a better path forward to accommodate people while still maintaining safety. Shelley? Oh, thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Just to answer to what Ben was saying, to apply for an ATV sticker from a club, you have to meet certain criteria. You need to know what type of vehicle you have. And someone that you're showing, the devil ain't gonna issue a sticker for trail access.
Richard Noel, you want to say something? What's that?
I think Raymond touched on one thing that can be done, but the, just the idea in this article about being registered, insured, and valid VASA is, it eliminates some, they're running the illegal net without a plate or some point of investigative process that an officer can stop a person and say, do you have this, do you have this? And that's another good point brought up. A valid sticker from the club, accepting the fact that this is a vehicle that can be done.
We have any discussion?
I thought this was...
Vern?
We were a bad, oh, sorry. We were a bad select board. We didn't introduce ourselves to begin with. So going back to the beginning of the meeting, Vern Brodsky, the chair.
Richard Flint, select board.
Ben Mall, select board.
And you all know me.
We got Kyle, moderator, and select board member tonight. So the question that came up earlier was about enforcement. I think, I don't think we really touched on that. I got to talk to Bob Courier the other day. He's, I think, the lead fish and game warden. And I think when he came to us, he said that they're the ones that would enforce this. So I asked him, I said, what do you think about Highgate opening up all roads? He goes, he kind of, he laughed. And he goes, bad idea. He goes, you guys were known. He goes, you guys were famous statewide six or seven years ago. He goes, you don't want that back, do you? And I said, I don't, but there's other people in the town that do. And it's a democracy. And you know, the highest number of votes wins. So I asked him about enforcement. I said, one of the things VASA told us was that the enforcement would be done pretty much exclusively by the fish and wildlife game warden. Once again, he laughed. He goes, Vern, he goes, there's 42 of us in the whole state. And he goes, we don't ride all the time. And he goes, it's very rare that we do. The other question was, we talked about like St. Albans PD, which I want to give them a hand because they took over in 2020 when we were having the problem. And they got it under control. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't see as much of a problem anymore in the town because we do have good enforcement now. And I think the sheriff has taken over too, taken over the same role of St. Albans PD and done a good job enforcing. With that being said, you're still going to have the knuckleheads that go out there with the loud pipes, without the stickers, without the helmets that go down the road. Last year, there was one doing, he passed me doing about 55, 60. Eventually, you know, I described where he went to the police, and the cops caught him two days later and gave him the talk. Haven't seen him do anything since. But they can't pursue. That's a safety issue. They can't do a hot pursuit on these guys if they decide to run. So the only rule enforcement, if they want to comply and pull over when they get blue lighted, is you as a citizen, if you see something happen, you kind of got to follow them, not chase them, follow them, put yourself in danger and try and figure out where they live. Or if you recognize them, just give the cops a call. But that's the reality of the enforcement, if we open all the roads Go ahead, Henry.
So I'm less positive about this issue now because saying we can enforce it.
There's not going to be much.
And it's unfortunate for those that are buying.
Correct.
But if they're not going to help us enforce it, we're just opening up ourselves again.
I mean, there are St. Albans...
Is there any wording for that?
No, that's, you're covered in ag for that. If you're a farmer going from field to field doing work and all that, or like somebody else said, bringing a bag of grain somewhere, that kind of thing, ride alongside the road, shortest route possible, across the road, that kind of thing, you're covered there.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit, I got a different view than these guys. And I'm going to bring my view up. My view is, 12, 13, 14 years ago, it was all about four-wheelers. And as you know, I coached cross-country in the Siskiyou, San Dance, we ran out there. And there were some kids that almost got hit, runners and that kind of stuff. But a group of guys, like Raymond, John, they got together and they said, will, if you'll let us, we'll work with these young people. And this group got together and they made a club. And it went away. It slowed up. They talked to these young people. And that's what we need in this town. I don't think, throw our hands up and say, no, we need a form of club and get with these young people and be their grandfather or whatever and show them the right ways. And it won't be bad. And you know, I'm getting at that age. I want, I want to get aside this someday. You know, so Ray, I, I'm not against this. That's my feeling. And I think as a town, we can work together and we can get through this. Okay?
Scott Martin.
Hello. Hey, my name's Scott Martin. I live here in Highgate. If we have to have a VASA or VAST or whatever you want to call it, sticker on your bike, is there any way that we can be part of that revenue from that kickback to the town in some way? If we're using road, I mean, if we're using like different areas, are they going to upkeep it? You guys, I'm one, and I love to use one. I love to ride. I'm the guy that's on the dirt road up in Franklin riding around. Just partner on it. And I love doing it. But I just don't know if there's a way Highgate could improve any costs if it has to add a VAST or VAST sticker on it. Is there something we can contribute so at least Highgate can get some money back for that?
So I have some experience with VASA. And they're a club that is known for their reputation of being a positive influence of the community. If we had an issue with trail maintenance, they would come out and they would fix it themselves to no cost to the town. That's just what they do. They want to ride. And they want to keep things safe for themselves as well. We probably could look into maybe a, in addition to the registration fees, but that would be a conversation between us and the VASAs. And I think we should look at that if there's a need.
So I believe the answer to that is, at this point, there's no avenue for collecting money through VASA, as it stands, set up the way it is now.
Yep. I got a question, Ray. You want to speak first? When you and Woody came in in the fall, we asked you guys for a map, a vision of what roads you wanted to open. There was a lot of discussion. You guys had all these ideas in your head. We never got a map. So then we just went through every road. My question is, other towns that I've researched, that VASA has gone into, they didn't ask for all roads because they already went to the landowners and did the hard work and knocking on the doors, asking for permission to ride through their fields, that kind of thing. Was any of that done? Or are you looking to use our road system as your trail system?
I'd like to use the roads that are there. But we did some research with other towns in Franklin County. Highgate is the only one that wasn't all of them. I think Richford specifies certain roads over there. This, and they're, it's all the ordinances here. And we want to see. And Lake Ridgefield has a fee a yearly fee that they charge to make various stickers for people from outside Lake Ridgefield.
So I guess the question is, why use the road system for ATVs? They're an all-terrain off-road vehicle. Why do you want to use the roads and not create a trail system in the town?
We need the road system to get the trails. There's some class four roads we could get to. So I think we'll have to get some of the other things that have more trails than we do.
Yeah, put your microphone here.
Just speak a couple, please, Ray. Closer.
We'd like to be able to get to other towns that have more trails than we do. But until we can get to them, we're going to need all our roads to get to places probably find a class four road. All trails are dislocated. If we can't get to them...
That's where I thought we made a reluctant compromise last year, opening up the trails to connect Swan to Franklin.
I did.
And we did. And we thought that was going to make everybody happy. But we're not happy with that, I guess.
Well, it's, it's good for me because I live right next to that. But it doesn't work for everybody. There's a lot of people in other parts of town that don't have access to get to, you know, like to get to Franklin or Shelton or wherever.
Don't most people have to trailer their ATVs to get to the trailhead?
Not necessarily. If you live in a area that's open. They're opening up the rest of the town.
So we're doing this so you don't have to trailer the ATVs to the trailhead?
No, preferably not.
Okay. All right. I'm good. I got nothing else. Any other questions?
So is the rail trail open to four-wheelers?
I need to see that one? No.
It's got to be on.
Have they heard?
I can tell you, nope, it's not.
It's not open to four-wheelers, but Wendy informed me last week it is open to snowmobiles during certain times of the year. So is this way they don't do damage?
Any other questions? Okay. Article four, so the voters of the town of Highgate request the select board to hold the town meeting day informational meeting within 30 days preceding town meeting day, as is allowed per statute 17VSA 2680. Any questions?
I've got a comment.
Vern's got a comment.
Raise your hand if you were here last year for our last town meeting day. We beat this to death. And extended the meeting by an hour. But it was a good discussion. So we ended up agreeing on this seven-day thing. And I can tell you, there's a select board member, I'm sorry, five, I'm sorry, five. And as a select board member, this doesn't really... I'm sorry, five, I'm sorry, five, and as a select board member, this doesn't really work. The reason is, uh, some of the ballots go out before this five-day window that we're in right now. So people that can't come here, that can't watch the TV, that can't read the minutes on the website, don't have all the information to make a fully educated vote. Um, I, I don't know who brought this up on the ballot, but it's a great idea to go back to the thirty days prior, cause we will have already had everything in the town book done by then. This is pretty much in print by January. So if we do this thirty days prior to our info meeting next year, uh, it would really help the select board, I think, help all the voters get all the information they need in a timely manner before the ballots start going out. That's my two cents on that.
Any other questions? Okay. Article five, has a non-binding advisory opinion, shall the voters of the town of Highgate purchase the property located at Five Gore Road, formerly known as Posser Thought, owned by Robert and Cheryl Wilkins, has an option for the future home of the Highgate Library and Community Center? Uh, would it be appropriate this time to ask Cheryl to...
Cheryl, uh, would you mind just introducing yourself and uh, just tell us what you think and why you wanna the town to have this opportunity to buy your building?
So also, if you know me, you know, I was the vet in Highgate, Cheryl. So we've had this property for twenty-four years, we've been in it and rented part of it, bought it out half at a time from two different owners. It's the fourth hundred-and-sixty-plus-year-old building that we have renovated.
Bring the mic up, please.
So I was talking to Richard, well, and it just came up in conversation. And I thought it checked a lot of boxes. Um, it would be no doubt easy for Robert and I, because the boundaries are, I mean, all aligned all around, it's home of the town anyway, so that would be easy, wouldn't have to use a realtor. That being said, I thought it'd make a great space for, for the library. The whole downstairs has been completely gutted, um, and redone, all the way to the studs. So it's got new wiring, new plumbing, uh, insulation, new sheet rock, new windows, new doors, and a roof. Um, and it's, and it's big, most of the chalk up in here, which is one thing I think that the trustees of the library like, because it is a chalked space, because that's what worked for me. But most of that are non-bearing walls, you can come out. So I'm just, I thought it was a, a great auction, because it's right there with the town's lot. It's on the same side of the road as the school, which heaven help us crossing seventy-eight is, it's just, I don't think that's a good, good thing for kids. It's not even a good thing to go across and try to get coffee, I mean, it's hard. Bad, honestly. And then, uh, I think it would be a pretty inexpensive uh, auction for the town. The cost of the building is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. You could, I did hear uh, one comment like, oh, I read in the paper, why do we need two stories for a library? Point well taken, you don't need two stories, obviously, which you could just cut the water off to the upstairs and let it be an attic, you wouldn't even need it. And downstairs, it's, you know, you, you have to knock out the bearing walls and you have to level the floor and you have to put in a uh, handicap accessible bathroom. Those thoughts that I have. But I still think that the total picture would be better for the town on that side of the road and a lot less expensive than starting from scratch. However, it's not my decision to make, but those are my points.
The only thing I would like to add to that, or just to add, there was a comment made at a public meeting that the select board was looking to buy this property to keep from landlords coming in and controlling what was gonna go in that corner. We, we wanted to, as a select board, wanted to control whoever bought that building. It's absolutely false, it was never said, it was never discussed in any select board meeting. As a matter of fact, in private conversations, it was never discussed. Um, that was never the goal of this, ever. And I just wanted that on the record, so everyone knows, um, if this goes or doesn't go, that was never the intention of the select board, was to control what went there. Vern?
Um, I'm just gonna do, I typed up some notes here, so I apologize, and I feel like, hey, I'm just gonna read these while I'm talking. Um, to give the background on this, how this all went down, and how we came into this situation where this came to be an article this year. The select board found out in November of twenty-twenty-four that the former Posser Thought building was available, and um, I guess that, from what I understand, our former TA knew about it, but we weren't told. I found out through the grapevine in November, even though it was in the spring of last year. With that being said, had this happened in the spring, we could be a lot further ahead with the information we need to make a better educated vote. I was reluctant to put this article out there because we don't have a lot of information. We got a sale price, we got a location, and we did a walkthrough, uh, the select board did with uh, one of the trustees, um, and Cheryl and her husband. And we walked through and, you know, we're like, wow, it's a big space, yep. The weight-bearing walls thing came up, the way we, you know, it used to be a grocery store, you could knock all the walls out in the first floor, have a big open area. Now, um, some issues that came up from the trustees later, whereas it's not ADA compliant, no, it's not, but neither is the current library, uh, from what we were told. And I don't know if everybody got to read the article, the trustees put in the messenger uh, this past week, um, but no, it's not ADA compliant. Oh, just a second. So we're going back to when we heard the, that it was available, like, okay, this would be a great compromise, because going back to twenty-seventeen, the trustees at that time did a study, I don't know how much money they paid for it, to look at the feasibility of putting a, a much larger library, a community center, uh, near the, where the current Meche property stands. Um, that's, I, I got the blueprints here, and you can come and look at them after the meeting. It's, it's beautiful, beautiful drawings, there's seven different versions of it. Um, I don't think it included sewer at that time, so that wasn't part of it, but money-wise, this is in twenty-seventeen dollars, that's a two-million-dollar project. So I did my homework today, uh, and I had Shelley get on her uh, cost inflation calculator that she uses for the auditors that they require her to use. Twenty-seventeen dollars, that was two million, and twenty-twenty-five dollars, the cost of inflation, it's a twenty-nine-point-seven percent increase. So that library today would cost two-point-seven million to build. For the last eight years, as mentioned in the article, we have been generously giving the library fifty-thousand dollars a year to put towards this new building. When I did the math today, cause I don't know if you guys watch the meetings, I'm a big math guy, I figured out, well, wait a minute, how long is this gonna take to get to two-point-seven billion? If we were gonna build that thing today, kinda thing? It's fifty-thousand dollars a year, uh, ninety-five years at the current rate that we're putting money away. So our grandkids might be able to see the ground breaking. That's why we all thought, as the board, when we did the walkthrough, the Posser Thought building would be a great compromise, it's a great price, it's a discounted price, he wants it to stay in the town's hands. Yes, it'd be some work. The plan would be, if this all went through, when we started library steering committee, um, to get, uh, we got members from the planning commission, DRB, one member at large from the public, a trustee and a select board member, all the parts that need to come together to make this project work. That would be the plan. I'm, I'm gonna skip this next part, we'll save this for later if any need for further discussion, but... Anyways, when it comes to the compromise, and right now, we'd, we'd love to see a compromise with the trustees for the town to pursue this, because if not, I don't think the town can afford this. Two-point-seven million dollars, not now, not ninety-five years from now, even more if you add the cost of inflation then. Uh, with that being said, um, anybody else wanna talk? I'm sure the trustees would like to talk.
So Rash?
Another trustee, but I just wanted to know...
Your name, please?
Diane LaRuff.
Thank you.
Um, what are we gonna do with the Meche building then? And um, cause we've been told like for the past four years, whenever they're gonna renovate it, well, first they were deciding to tear it down or renovate it. Now, I guess there's too much to renovate it, so are they gonna tear it down? And then the other question I had, it's not, the other one's not ADA compatible, so how much would that cost to bring that in, to make it, you know, right? So it is ADA.
The last question, that's a trustee question, I don't know. I guess there's some strings, if they make it ADA compliant, then you have to do, from what I understand, a lot, I'm not an ADA expert, uh, we've got, I think, one in the room in the back, the librarian, Christine, she might be able to answer that question. But there's a lot more work to just saying ADA compliant, and putting some signs that are rampant, there's a lot more to it, I guess. As for the Meche property, that's something that when we seat the new select board next week, uh, whoever gets voted in is gonna be one of the items that we talk about. Uh, eventually that was gonna get torn down to build the new, the proposed library, the, the two-million-dollar one. And also, we have the um, the assisted living place, like Cathedral Square, part of that footprint falls on there. As for the Meche property, I was in it uh, this past fall, um, during, for a walkthrough. There's parts you can't walk on, you'll fall through the floor. Um, I think the town, this is before my time, when they bought it, had good intentions, like the Riviera Hotel in Swan to fix it up. That time has passed, it's beyond fixing, I think it's just rot, if you ask me, which is a shame. We did have over the last, I think, two or three years, uh, one investor from California come out and looked at it, and as soon as they walked through, they're like, beyond repair. So I'm pretty sure that building's gonna end up coming down to make a clean slate for whatever we wanna put there next. I would have loved to have saved it, is, I think it was a beautiful building, but right now, I think it's, it's, it's gonna be too much work to try and, try and keep it and fix it. Christine, if you wanna answer the uh, ADA compliance question, cause I'm really not an expert on that.
Sure. So this is a very big question, and it would take all night to answer it for you, so I, I will keep it very brief, but um, you will need contractors to come in. Um, again, I am not a contractor, I've been very transparent about that, but I have a certification in ADA compliance, see, when it comes to public libraries. And the building's floors are an issue, they will need to be rised so that the entire building is accessible. There are new doors, which is great, but we would probably need to be putting wheelchair-accessible doorways there, railings, um, these are all things that I can't give you an answer today, but it would need a bigger um, inspection in order to have that number for you. So hopefully that answers your question. Yeah, yeah, she said, I'm just wondering about the money. We, we wouldn't be able to answer that for you today, it would need a proper inspection, contractors that are also ADA compliant trained to ensure that the, you are meeting state mandates for that building, um, but I don't think we're at a place to answer that question right now for you.
I would like to add, please, that um, this is a non-binding vote for the very reason that, because it came up so late, uh, I don't know what the Wilkins timeframe is. Um, obviously, engineering, engineers have to come in, uh, assess the building, uh, ADA compliant, quotes need to be done, and we need to get a solid number to go to the taxpayers. Again, that's why it's a non-binding vote, we're just trying to get the temperature of the people, taxpayers make these decisions. Um, I think it's important for you to know upfront, there's a lot of information that we don't know, because it came so late. And we apologize, we don't have the information for you, but we didn't have the opportunity, we didn't have time. We wanted to see where everybody's minds are at in this process, that's, that's what this, that's why it's non-binding. Rebecca?
My name's Rebecca Manning, I'm the chair of the library trustees. I'd like to respond to some of the things that Vern said. And I guess to some things that you said as well. Um, if you go back and listen to some of those select board meetings, I think the ones from December, it was said in a select board meeting, whether it should have been or not, that...
I would like to hear that recording, that's all I'm saying.
Go back and listen to it, I've listened to a lot of them lately, but that was said. And maybe it wasn't meant, maybe it shouldn't have been said, but it was. And I admit that I'm the person that called that out. When we look at the rest of that big picture about that building, if, I don't know if everybody read that article that we put in the paper or not, but I think that there are just too many unknowns at this point. Cheryl's here tonight, and she said what that ask price is, which is excellent for that to be public information, I think that was a huge piece that was missing in this article. But there are so many other unknowns that we mentioned in that article as well. The ADA compliance, anything else that needs to get brought up, you know, if there is asbestos or anything else that needs to be remediated in that building. The traffic, I know that when I was on the Village Core, and we were looking at the rest of that Meche property, how the traffic entered and exited was a huge deal that we hadn't looked at. And then the cost of doing all of those things is unknown on top of the cost of the building. Um, Diane, you had asked about the Meche House, and I, this is the first that I ever that that was going to be torn down. I thought that when we chose to purchase that property, that whatever happened there was going to be a vote of the townspeople. And I think that before we look at purchasing additional property, we should look at the property that we already own and see what the cost would be to renovate that in comparison with anything else, so that we're really comparing apples to apples and have all of the information to make an informed decision. Um, you had said, you know, that you had looked with the money that we've set aside, it would take ninety-five years to purchase a new library, I trust your math. Um, this has not been a short-term goal of the trustees. It's been something that we've been working on for a long time. Since that twenty-seventeen drawing that you're looking at, that's two million dollars, we've worked hard as a trustee group to whittle that library down to something that's more modest, something that will meet the needs of the community here. But we understand, you know, we are all taxpayers as well, and we don't want to break the bank either. We do understand, though, that, you know, there is inflation, since we've looked at those numbers. We also know that there are grants available, and that's not something that we have pursued intensely yet, because we're not ready to build a new library today. We want to make sure that we're planning this out, that it's well thought out, and that when we either purchase or build a new library, that we're looking fifty and a hundred years ahead to be able to meet the needs of this community. Um, one of the other things, when Diane had asked about making the current library ADA accessible, we had looked at expanding the current library in that twenty-seventeen feasibility study. And because of the size of the lot, we can't expand the footprint of the library, and we also can't build up on that current library. And during all of the public meetings that we heard, one of the things that came up again and again was the need and the want for a larger community space, so that a meeting like this could be held at the library, so that scout meetings could be held there, four-H meetings could be held there, what have you. But that would be a community space that's usable, and with the size of the current building, that's just not feasible. I think that's all I have to say at this point. The gentleman in front of me.
Thank you.
And his hand raised too.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Davey's over. Um, when you walk up and you buy this building, and you're like, oh, you don't fix it up, is that gonna be feasible?
That's the part that Kyle and I kinda apologize for, we don't have that information right now. Right now, this is a feasibility, that's something after this vote. This vote right now is non-binding, and just to see, like you said, the feeling of the town, do we wanna pursue this? And this is not, by the way, the select board is not the only one that makes the decision, this is gonna be the trustees, because we've allocated funds to them. Right now, they got three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in the pot to put towards their, their library, whether it's Posser Thought or whatever they choose. But uh, the million-dollar thing, I, I honestly don't know. The, the, the plan would have been if, if this is a yes vote, then we, the library steering committee, they start getting appraisals, then we start getting the inspections, see if it needs remediation for all the stuff that she just uh, talked about, and then we go from there. Um, the other part of the plan that, and this is all public, and I know you guys don't make all the meetings, um, and you can't sometimes, um, would be to sell the old library, that money from that, right now, that appraises about two-hundred thousand, sell that, and we've already got a buyer eagerly wants that, bill got a buyer eagerly wants that building at any cost, if we could, I'd probably get more than 200 for it, is what I heard. Uh, put that towards the remediation and reconstruction of the possible thought building. Uh, the other stuff will be grants, and that's a question I have for the trustees, but this is for later on about, we're never gonna get there with taxpayer CIP money to get this new library, it's, it's like having a high-interest maxed-out credit card and making a minimum payment, it's never gonna get paid off. So, there's gotta be some grants in here somewhere to, to make up that, that shortfall for the taxpayer money, and personally, I don't think the taxpayer should pay for the whole thing. But that's up to the trustees and the select board to work out, and the tax, everybody here when you vote. Uh, so the million dollar question, that is a million dollar question, I honestly don't know. Um, the best guess, I think we've got, is it Chris?
Shepherd.
Chris Shepherd, who's a contractor, he's gonna be in the library steering committee, he's got construction experience, uh, it's one of the reasons he was tapped and volunteered, because he's gonna bring that to library steering committees and be able to get some good numbers out of him.
Why couldn't you, uh, ask the people before we buy it, you know, on the ballot, say, do we want to, instead of shadowing by-
Well, that's, that's why this is a non-binding vote.
It's non-binding.
It's not binding, it's not, it's not a binding vote.
We're, so yeah, so just to clarify-
That's all.
If this is a yes vote on Tuesday, this is back to, yeah, we are not buying Cheryl's building the day after. That's just the beginning of the process to pursue possibly buying the building. If we get a no vote, then there's gonna be very little energy put into this new library or to throw money at the CIP fund. There's no sense in, in, in throwing, in throwing, you know, doing the remediation, getting the appraisals, all that, if the town doesn't want it, then we're not gonna do it. That's why we put this out, but the select board and the trustees could have made this decision alone without the town, but this is a big money item, and I'm a big believer in, in the more opinions, the better, so that's why it's on the ballot. Sorry it's confusing, sorry we don't have all the information, there was discussion of whether we're gonna put it on the ballot or not, but I said, she's on a short timeline, Cheryl is to sell, and that's the other thing she didn't say, can I say it? But she's got a buyer lined up for this, if the town votes no, we lose the opportunity for this building. Oh, I thought we did. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so she's gonna put up for sale the day after the vote, if the vote goes no, that's going up for sale. And that means the town might not have an opportunity ever to buy that again, at least in my lifetime or our lifetimes.
Rebecca?
What's the cost for the feasibility studies and the timeline? You haven't looked into any, why have you not looked into any of that?
Because it's a non-binding vote, and we're getting the feel of the town to see if the town wants to do this.
But isn't it irresponsible to ask the town to make a vote on something where, I mean, how it's written until tonight, it was, will you spend an unknown amount of money to purchase this building, and then put forward another unknown amount of money to renovate it? It's really difficult to ask people to make a decision when that's the question.
Go ahead. I think you're reading too deep into the question. The question is, do we want to pursue this library? The feasibility of possible thought of this library, that is pretty much it, there's nothing else to offer. All the final details, all the, the hard work comes after. If we don't get a yes vote, then there's no sense of putting energy into this, any, any thought in this whatsoever, other than what we normally do by putting money into CIP.
Article five reads to purchase, it does not say- Article five says to purchase, it's non-binding, but it is to purchase, it's to not, it's not to further look into, it reads to purchase, I'm not looking too much into it.
All right, we're missing words. I think we know where the, where the select word stands on this, and I think we know the trustees stand on this. I'm hoping to work with you guys, but it's gonna be hard to do if we're gonna miss words like this.
If you're hoping to work with us, then come to us and ask to work with us, don't blame us on this.
You have to come to us, we don't come to you. I don't want to get into this right now, but we could talk about this in our next meeting.
That's where we should-
We invite you to the next meeting.
That's where we put it, next meeting.
Next meeting.
That's not for here. Richard Noel.
I'll type in my own role, but the select board did not make that comment, I did. So, so say it correctly.
There was people that, I located right with you, and later it was learned.
All right, we're gonna get beat on this end. But what I saw in the idea proposal, purchasing that building or looking into it, is that the location, the renovation, the space that is in that building right now, it's three times bigger than the present building, and that's not counting the upstairs. The addition to the side of this building is over 1,031 square feet, over 1,000 square feet. The proposed new building, the community room is only 930 square feet, and that's in the plan. So I'm seeing possibilities of having as much room, not 100% as much room, but having as much room, and definitely a lot more room than they have presently, the location is excellent, it's not gonna be on town land surrounding it, parking would increase, green space would be more available, because there would be enough, an additional building in this area. And I think there's a lot of possibilities here. There's enough possible monies in the account to purchase the building, there's gonna be at least half to three-quarters of the amount to rehab it in the sale of the other building. So maybe, and again, it's speculative, but the way the question is asked, it's a non-binding and best, and best or a question. But I think it's worth pursuing, and unfortunately, if it hadn't been for some misinformation months and months ago, we could have gone into different avenues of approaching this as far as funding, but the possibilities are all there, as far as the floors, the interior, they could be totally gutted when you build, it's, the building is very stout, strong, livable and warm, it's being lived in, so it isn't deteriorating building, it's sitting there. That's, that's my, my plan, basically.
Thank you. We have any other comment? Just one minute, please.
I think it sounds great and everything, but the Meche House has to be torn down first, to me, because that's gonna cost a lot of money. Either just kind of leave it there until it falls down?
Unfortunately, I, unfortunately, that's not for this meeting to discuss. I understand your question, I, I respect your question, this is in the form for that, that question right now. I, I would highly recommend that you get yourself on the next agenda for the next select board meeting, and, and ask the question. That'd be my suggestion to you.
But if we have to vote on March 4th-
It's non-binding, it's a non-binding vote, so-
Yeah, yeah, it's non-binding.
So, I mean, you, you're not putting your name on any dollar mail, it's, it's a non-binding vote. Any other questions? Chris Shepherd.
Chris Shepherd, uh, just to clarify, the non-binding, I think there's a little confusion there, but if we vote yes, we're not buying the property, if you did do all the feasibility studies, decided to buy it, it would come to the town as a vote then, correct?
We all done?
I'm not sure that I wanna, I don't, Cheryl, you don't have to answer this, um, but if you're on a timeline, and if somebody had said that, um, you know, that if, if we vote no, then Cheryl can put it on the market the day after, but if we vote yes, and then we go and we do all of the feasibility studies, that we're saying that we need the information for, nothing happens quickly.
Correct.
So I would assume that that is probably wishful thinking, to think that we would have that information within six months, you know, probably more likely, within six to 12 months, we would have that. So, I, I haven't had this discussion with Cheryl, but I don't know if that affects their timeline, you know, if we're not able to purchase for a year from now.
It's a great question, I don't know Cheryl, if you're able to give us an answer on that this evening or not, um- One second, please, hold, hold on. Thank you.
We don't have a set timeline, we're waiting to see-
Okay.
-what the town wants to do. I mean, if it could, I mean, the only thing I can say is if the town doesn't want to do this project, and you get an absentee no vote, um, on town meeting, then I guess that's the end of the discussion.
Sign goes up.
We will go a different route.
Yep.
But I'm, so far, not interested in telling it out to whether the town, the town, because I would love to see it be a library, but personally, so, we're all ready.
Thank you. Any other questions? Having none, we'll move on to Article Six. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate vote to raise and appropriate, raise appropriate and expend the sum of $7,423 for the support of the VNA hospice of the Southwest region to provide services to the residents of the, of the town?
Do we have a rep from the VNA?
Jason's here.
We have a rep from, yes, sir, right behind you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Jason DeZerole, I am representing the visiting nurse association and hospice of the Southwest region. Uh, this is the home health agency and hospice agency that replaced Franklin County Home Health Agency. So, um, Franklin County Home Health Agency, um, has the longstanding tradition, as all the Vermont VNA's of receiving support from the municipalities, um, the VNA is hoping to continue on this tradition, um, they're asking for the same amount of money that Franklin County Home Health had. Um, so, home health agencies face a lot of challenges in the state, um, these agencies do not make money, um, they're gonna have an operating cost this year probably of $1 to $2 million. Operating loss was official last year, $125 million. They're nonprofit agencies, um, if you're not familiar with the services that they provide, uh, it's, it's home care, so it's rated near homes, um, it runs from pediatric care, right to end-of-life care, right, so it's the whole gamut. Some of you might be familiar, um, you know, you have friends or family that have had VNA services, you probably know what I'm talking about, my folks might not be familiar, so it's just, it's good to, to talk about, like, what exactly do we do, and why do we need support from the, from the community, so. Uh, VNA is looking to, um, get the, get the same appropriation, uh, you know, from the towns, um, when they jumped into the Franklin County area. Um, VNA came in last year in March, when Franklin County Home Health was no longer able to, um, stand on itself financially, and had to close. So I was actually employed with the, the Franklin County Home Health Agency just for a few months before we made the decision, um, with the Franklin Board to, uh, to, to transition out of services, essentially, and we were actually really lucky to have the VNA come in. Um, they were centered out of Roland and Bennington County, um, they decided to come up here to help us out, they've been wonderful. Um, objectively, they've done a lot to improve home health services, um, VNA does not turn anyone away, um, that seeks home health and hospice services. And objectively, uh, you know, we've improved our service, we, we have a better objective quality score, um, from CMS, um, for the services that we do, and we have offered more services to, uh, the, the towns in Franklin County. So there were the big improvements, um, I really hope that folks who seem to want to support the VNA, um, happy to answer any other questions.
I have a quick question for you, sir. Uh, do you have an idea how many Highgate residents are receiving your services as of today?
Um, so we, we pull the visit count, um, and we're well over 1,000 visits from the one-year point.
To the town of Highgate?
To the, yep, um, so-
Thank you.
Yep, there's a lot of visits that begin every day.
Ty, show one here in the back, please. Yeah, we can, buddy.
So, uh, thank you for answering, uh, I was a little hung up on it, the, the hospice of the Southwest, and, uh, so thanks for giving that explanation. Um, what I would say is thank you for all you do for the community, and, uh, if, if VNA feels that asking for more money in future years would help the community, I recommend you do it.
Um, I, I will add one small, um, piece of news, uh, the VNA of the Southwest region is going to rebrand and change their name, um, we're working on that now, obviously Southwest region doesn't really fit in Franklin County, so, uh, stay tuned.
Good call.
Yeah, very good call.
Do you have any other comments, questions? Mr. Benoit in the back.
As we all face old age, Vermont has a radically aging population, uh, there's definitely a need for the service. And in the past, I see my parents benefited from it in the last days, we all want to get there, we all need the service, and we damn well should be ready to pay for it, that's what we said.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. Any other comments? Article Seven. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate reallocate $30,000 within the capital improvement plan from the indoor turf fieldhouse line item, move it to a 72-inch zero-turn mower line item? Any questions on that?
Yeah.
We got Richard Noel on the back, and then Brad D'Urburn.
Cheryl, I was gonna ask if you could explain why we wanted to move this.
Poor Ryan, this guy lives here.
Ryan asked for a leak, um, so, the turf we had put in the capital improvement plan several years ago, um, it is in rough shape, but looking at the replacement cost versus the usage we do get out of it, we felt that the need for the zero-turn is a lot more important right now, and the $30,000 sitting there is literally just sitting there with no future plans to use it at this time. So we thought it was more fiscally responsible to use money that we have, if the town is okay, to move it over. What we do not use of that money would stay in that line item for fixing it if we need to, uh, but it would stay in that zero-turn line item, it's not like we're going out purchasing a $30,000 zero. We are looking to get prices for four, we, we discussed, four different makes, and hopefully purchase within the next few months, if we can get it approved to move it over.
Would you have any ideas on the question that was asked on pricing? Can you give us an idea, a range of pricing that you've, have you been able to get that
Not at this time.
Fair enough. Any other questions?
Okay, so I'd like to add that, uh, last year, we got caught on predicament with our zero-turn, uh, the zero-turn, we've been rolling all of our athletic fields as well as all the parks, uh, where we're waiting on parks, and that was three weeks, where, which time we had to beg, borrow, and just, we didn't get the steel in part yet, we were able to beg and borrow, uh, zero turns to maintain our parks and our athletic fields. So, the idea is we're gonna keep our old zero-turn, put the work into it that that requires to maintain, and then we'll have this new one so that we won't be down fully through the rolling seasons.
Thank you. Any other comments? Article Eight. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate appropriate $590,000 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the capital improvement plan, when the estimated $590,000 to be raised by taxes? Any questions on the CIP? Yeah, Ty.
So $590,000 is what we're voting on, does anybody remember what the first number from the planning commission presented to the select board was? How much did the select board cut out of it?
It was almost- I was gonna say, I believe it was around $750,000. Before it came to the select board. Is anybody here from the planning commission? Is anybody here from the PC, PC that can answer that? Scott? Around $750,000 is what it originally was. Any other questions? Mr. Rainville.
How much, how much, what is the total of the CIP?
I can't, I don't have that number.
Okay. So if you are looking on page fifty-two of the report, and you go down the second column, that has what's been raised. Some of the project money in the very in and around town capital projects has been spent and reimbursements are coming in. So that is not a accurate picture of what is currently in the capital improvement plan for the projects, but for the departments, it's pretty accurate. The, the column is called capital reserves. So for instance, the Zamboni is the first one that has anything in it. Forty-two thousand five hundred is what is in the capital improvement right now for the Zamboni. That's the column you want to follow down. So that's the, Rebecca's asking if we follow past the bold black line, and that is where it gets a little iffy because it's, most of the projects down below are fully grant funded, or grants are involved with the in and around town projects. The class three road improvements is something that was recently started by the planning commission, so that is fifty thousand that's in there. The transfer station slope stabilization was just barely closed out this week, so I can't give you what is left over from that project today. The village core master plan, same thing, there's a lot going on there, or sorry, the Nishu Road slide and the village core master plan. So seventy thousand was put into the village core, but we've got a lot of reimbursements waiting to come in.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Article Nine. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate appropriate $1,153,171 to meet expenses and liabilities of the highway fund with an estimated $982,171 to be raised by taxes? Have any questions? Article Ten. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate appropriate $1,600,822 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the general fund with an estimated $710,352 to be raised by taxes? Moving on. Article Eleven has a non-binding advisory opinion. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate contract with AmCare ambulance service for all ambulance services in the amount of $269,262.97, with such services beginning on July 1st, 2025, for a term of three years? Have any questions?
I'm sorry, we did ask AmCare.
Okay, so before we, before we get comments, each service will have a time just to give a short... Can I get a microphone up front, please?
Sales pitch.
Sales pitch, yeah.
Hi, my name is Clay McLeod. I'm the director of AmCare ambulance service. I've been serving Franklin County for thirty-nine years. We put our proposal here, we are a professional service, we feel we could sort of done the idea we have in the past. We always get the problems. We are fully staffed right now, like everybody else, we had shortages, and now we're back to where we belong. I welcome any questions.
Ms. Coda in the back?
Hold on. One moment, Sue.
We heard you lost the contract in Georgia. We saw an article saying the ambulance service you owned revoked, moving issue is done July 1st. Is this true?
Sue, you're going to need to shut your microphone off.
So the answer is yes and no. We did lose a contract with Georgia. People want to change their minds, if you want to go elsewhere, that's fine, that happens. It was not because we didn't do the service, it was a question of money, it was a dollar and cents amount. The business in New Hampshire is incorrect. We're closing the business in about forty-five days. We lost the 911 contract, the fire department decided to do it all. We're not sure how, the paramedics, that's it. One of them's a chief, we're not allowed to work in ambulance. So I don't know how they're going to do it, but it's true, but it's online. And then without the 911, it's not worth reading it, so we're losing others.
I go to all the strike coordinators, and I have a lot of people that call us at my house and tell me we need to strike board, and the strike board moves that. And these are the questions that I have been asked by a lot of Highgate residents. So I'm speaking for the town of Highgate as well. How many ambulances does AmCare have?
You understand, Sue, you've got to shut it off.
Six.
How many ambulances does Mississippi Valley Rescue have? And I understood that they cover primary, small, and heavy only, correct?
Just a minute, please, hold on. We're talking to AmCare right now, we're going to have an opportunity to ask Mississippi questions.
Is the Sheldon AmCare building stacked in Sheldon? Five years ago, it was supposed to be stacked. Is it stacked now or is it used?
I could say it's stacked about ninety percent of the time. There are times where we're shorthanded and we bring it to the city, absolutely. We do what's top system management, and wherever the volume is, is where we go. There was a time where we were very shorthanded, like everybody, COVID made a number for everybody in Africa, and we did look like the Sheldon station a bit, but we were obviously there responding to a while. It's no different than going to the firing of your territory.
How many towns does AmCare covers?
If you count the city and the town, that's two, we cover four towns. We cover Sheldon, San Antonio Town, San Antonio City, and Jersey.
You got two minutes, Sue. Let me bring your mic up to your mouth, please.
AmCare has only covered Highgate one time for three years. AmCare is a nonprofit organization that had changed ownership at least twice in the last few years, with their head quarters now located in Baltimore, Maryland, owned by Butler Medical Transport. Is that true?
So, no, we've been acquired by one company, it changes name, that's all. So we were acquired by Butler Medical Transport. Walter Crew was the owner for thirty-four years, and in 2020, he still worked for Butler Medical Transport, which is now WNC, the name of the owner, AmCare. Over the second question, sir? Oh, yeah. We are headquartered in Baltimore.
Yes, you have your headquarters in Baltimore?
So we are headquartered in Baltimore. What that means is all the financial aspect of the business is in Baltimore. Everything is run in Vermont, I mean. I mean, incident, all of it's all by me. Yes, I do have a boss, he's in Maryland. Sometimes he tells me what to do, sometimes I miss him.
Is your stack?
What is your?
We have, currently we have thirty-seven.
Paramedics.
Hello? Currently, we have, let's see, sixteen EMTs, ten advanced EMTs, eight paramedics, and three medical chiropractors.
Time's up.
Do you have any other questions?
Yep.
Are your crews always staffed?
Just a minute, please. Could you bring the mic and ask your question to the mic, please?
I can't even see who it is.
Name, name first, please.
Danielle Scott. I was asked if every crew is staffed with a paramedic.
Not every...
You're on, Clem. You were on.
Oh, sorry. Not every crew has a paramedic. It can't be. I run three trucks a day, I have eight paramedics. If you do the math, you have to work seventy-two, eighty hours a week each, and that's not right. So there are usually, I can guarantee you, I have at least one paramedic on shift, usually two. Our numbers were low, we did have that. We raised our rates, and now we're pretty well staffed. Do I have eight paramedics full-time? No. I think I have four, five right now. Between the critical care and the part-time, yeah, our number is low.
In the back?
Hi, I'm Mary Warena from Highgate. I have a question regarding your GPS, because a lot of times if you're following GPS, it might say St. Armond Road, and it might tell you to go through Forton Road, and you can't do that. So how familiar are you guys going to get with the roads? Because last time, there was a lot of delayed response because your crew didn't know the roads.
So that's absolutely correct. Forton Road is a troubled road, I should say. We have learned, and the staff is supposed to know about it. That being said, everybody, everybody in the country uses Google Maps. The GeoBase system, everything is based on Google. Does Google make mistakes? Yes. We would follow, yes. But we do it all by the phone.
I'm not just referring to the Forton Road and St. Armond Road, I'm referring to like a lot of the, the roads in Highgate. So I just threw that one out as an example, but are your crew, if they get the vote to cover Highgate, are they going to sit down and are they going to burn the areas? Because it's really important for response time, you know? My husband got burned a few years ago when AmCare was on the last time, and we called, and it was a forty-five minute response time. I ended up driving him to the Siskiess Bay to be transported because he was going into shock. So those response times are really, really important.
I fully agree, and like I said, we have learned a lot from our experience back then. Unfortunately, we were shut off from the learning process, and would I tell you that we continue to learn it? No, we didn't. Like a lot of ambulance services around, including the Siskiess, but we have a lot of people that aren't from the area. It's a learning curve for everybody. Do we try our best to do our job right and to go and respond in a timely manner? Absolutely. Will there be errors? I can say no. That would be lying to you. I'm not going to lie.
Any other questions? Yeah. Vern?
Hey, Glenn, got to turn around for this one.
No, it's Vern. He gets confused, though.
Great questions by everybody. I've had all the same questions, so we got about ninety percent of mine. One of the things lately that I've seen on Facebook from, like I say, the twenty, the ambulance services, but bragging on doing Boston runs. I understand they're a moneymaker, I understand you guys get paid per mile, so that's what the money is. Question is, I see you got six ambulances, I'm assuming two every eight hours over a twenty-five hour period you run, and so you send one to Boston. Does that leave one back here? What's your mutual aid situation, I guess?
So typically, we run three trucks a day. So if I send one to Boston, I still have two. We have rules. Once we only have two trucks, we cannot do any further than this. We say that because there's always critical transport, we're going to question who, who DM, whether they're Highgate patients, or patients, or someone, or whoever else, so we do that. But we do limit that. We will always keep a paramedic in town if we have one, or an ALS crew in town, no matter what. So if no freshman calls two transport to DM, guess what? You either wait or you call another specialist. As far as we're too late, it's pretty simple. I'm in the office, I hear everything, I'll be long. I know where my trucks are. If I get a call and I'm out, and I know I can go to it, it's like thirty seconds where you got the phone and say, hey, Central, coming to you. I don't wait two, three, four times. No thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, if I may?
If I may, and this is not just my service, every service. 911 does not pay. Transport fee. If 911 paid the way we're supposed to, we would have to come to you for money.
Want to get more, Vern?
I have one more question, I promise this is the last one. How many calls, can you tell us how many times that AmCare, since you haven't had the contract, has done mutual aid to Highgate?
In 2024, we gave the Highgate sixty-five or sixty-six times.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the comment you made before the question...
Who's talking?
What was that?
Name, please, name, please. Give me your name, give me your name first, please.
Vern the older.
Thank you.
Yeah, the comment... Yeah, the 911 thing, we couldn't hear, what did you say there?
So 911 calls typically for non-money making. A lot of people either don't have insurance, or they have Medicaid insurance, or even if they have Medicare insurance. Medicare, it supports the sense of life.
Any other questions for AmCare? All right. Article Twelve has a non-binding advisory, advisory opinion. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate contract with Siskiess Valley Rescue for all ambulance services in the amount of $268,936.11, with such services beginning on July twenty-first, July 1st, excuse me, 2025, for a term of three years? Questions?
Oh, no, we're going to have AmCare.
Oh, sorry, apologies. MVR, please. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Josh Ramsdale. I've been with Siskiess Valley Rescue for nineteen years, served next to our president here, Lynn Bellamy, she's got twenty-four years. Let's see, and so in 2024, Siskiess Valley Rescue responded to 1,853 calls, four hundred and thirty of those, which was a record, this year in Highgate. We've been in business since August of 1976. We were formed specifically for the communities of Highgate and Swan, we are your ambulance service. We are comprised of community, your community member, for your neighbors, friends, family. We cover again both Highgate and Swan. This last year, we responded to a record number of mutual aid calls into neighboring communities. We've seen that trend began in the mid-2021, and that has continued through today. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Sue Coda.
This is for MVR. Having mutual aid calls due to for aid here in 2024.
In 2020...
I see what was going on with that club, I see what you mean. 2024, we responded to 182 calls mutual aid for AmCare ambulance services, which was eighty-seven percent of our mutual aid calls. If you go back to 2021, fifty percent of our mutual aid calls were for AmCare, we are neighbors, but it has gone up to eighty-seven percent of our mutual aid calls. But it has gone up to 87% of our mutual aid responses.
How many members do you have on the MVR?
We currently... It's tricky. We, we currently have 28 members.
Josh, could you tell us the members' positions, like climate, yeah, this is breaking news?
Yep, absolutely. So we have... It's in the town. Our numbers have actually gone up a little bit since then. But we have total of two paramedics, two in training. We have nine AEM, oh, correction, 10 AEMTs, seven EMTs, four or five VFRs, and then, yeah. We just recently hired new members.
Also, MVR also offers a subscription program to eliminate the terms of taxes. We use $50, $60 usually in August. How is that going?
That's going fairly well. So with the subscription services, a lot of people are kind of confused when they get it in the mail. You don't have to pay it, but the benefit is it's almost like an insurance plan for the ambulance service. Any copays that you, you receive, if you don't have insurance, if you are a subscriber, you and everyone in your household, that bill's written off. And we've had good success with returns on the subscriptions.
Thank you. Okay, my turn. Hold on, one more. We got Gilbert in the back, please.
Can you hear me? Of the calls that you had in Highgate and Swanton in 2024, what was your average response time for your service to reach that patient?
Our average... That one's shutting off, yeah. Okay. Our average response time is approximately seven minutes. Obviously, East Highgate is not going to be seven minutes. Your Dunn Road and stuff, Highgate Springs, Highgate Center, you know, I mean, it's gonna vary. If you average everything out, it's seven minutes.
Vern.
Kind of all the same questions for AmCare. How many ambulances do you have?
We have a total of three paramedic licensed appliances.
And how many towns do you serve?
We serve Highgate and Swanton.
Same mutual aid question. Since you got, it looks like less assets, and you gotta do, well, I know you do a Boston run. I saw it on Facebook the other day. But what's your policy there for making sure that Highgate is covered?
So we do also do long-distance transfers. As Tom says, they are lucrative. They do bring money. But we feel that lives are most important, so we provide backup. So if we're gonna do a long-distance transfer like that, we need to make sure that we have one or two crews left on in our community, because two trucks generally cover Highgate and Swanton fairly well. So if we are gonna do a long-distance transfer, transfer, we want to make sure that we have the 911 area covered as well.
All right, thanks. Yeah, that's apples to apples right now, the numbers. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Josh, can you give just a little bit of a description as to what you might do if you showed up at my house because my husband had been severely burned and died from shock? Could you tell me exactly, like, you're not just gonna walk in and say, well, sorry that he's gone? Could you give a little bit of the care capacity that you guys provide?
I'm, I'm not totally comfortable with this question right now because it's very personal, and it's not relevant to what discussion is, I don't believe. It's his opinion and your opinion. I don't believe that's relevant here. Do we have any other questions? Yes, ma'am, right up front.
Angela Carr. I'm a resident of Highgate. So my son plays football. I see that you guys are there like at every game. So my question to you is like, if you're sitting at a game, do you have like two other ambulances like sitting in the bay? Is that how that works when you're like at a sports event? I'm just kind of curious what coverage you have, like, when you have to sit at a game, because it's required.
Yep, so... All right. So generally for a sporting event, yeah, seven days a week, we generally have two crews on during the daytime. So we would, if that truck had to leave for some reason, we would just swap in another crew. But yeah, we do need ambulance on site for medical coverage, which we do at no charge. But no, we usually have two crews on seven days a week, so.
Any other questions? Vern's got one more.
I should have asked this to AmCare. Maybe we'd come back to this. But I guess to most services, for all your employees, is there random drug testing? Two nods for, okay. Thank you.
Yes, we do provide random drug testing. Yes, zero tolerance.
Yeah, thank you.
We have anything else? Well, I guess with that, next Tuesday, March 4th, at the... Oh, wait, Ty's running in the back.
I want to thank both services for having representatives here. On top of that, because it's not a normal town meeting, I want to thank all the town employees.
Thank you, Ty. With that, folks, thank you very much for coming out tonight. KP?
Hey, could we hear if a candidate had a run for office?
Actually, I don't know if that would be... I'm not sure campaigning is allowed in this type of thing. We talked about that earlier. You can hit them up on town meeting day or voting day next, next Tuesday, or talk to them here now yourself, but I, I don't think this is the form for it. Not in a formal meeting, I don't believe. So having said that, town meeting day vote, March 4th, 7 to 7 at the rate. Thank you all very much for coming. Have a good evening.